Good evening, Danvers, and welcome to the Select Board Meeting of June 20. Chairman Mills is out of town, Mr. Bartha is out of town, and Mr. Duggan will be late. But with that, would you please rise and join us in the pledge, Maureen?
Yes, please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic, the which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Can I have an approval of the minutes of June 6, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing on, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. At this time, if there's anybody in the audience with new public business that's not on the agenda, please raise your hand. I see a gentleman way in the back there, if you'd like to go up and introduce yourself. Welcome.
Town meeting member, Precinct 1. Two things, if I could. I'm proud of Danvers, I'd like to think Danvers is proud of itself. The Elm Street parking lot, on the Elm Street end, there were a lot of weeds that needed to be cut and removed so that we have an attractive garden, that's one. The other one is, who's ever doing the work on the roads, cutting patches to do whatever they have to do and then repairing them? My observation is, they're not doing a decent job of compacting before they put the asphalt down. Specifically, Poplar Street to Hobart Street, there were several that have sunk, the asphalt has sunk because they weren't properly compacted, at least sharp edges, unless you are able to miss it, I'd hate to see a flat tire or such. The company must have posted a bond to do the work. Can we spend their money and we do the repair work, or can you please tell them to come back and do what they should have done when they patched it?
So ask Assistant Town Manager to check with DPW, and is it the gas company, is it the construction, whatever it is, and what is the contract called for them to come back? Obviously, we want it to settle before we repave, but...
I understand, but when you cut a patch, throw dirt in, the dirt can be tamped down with, there's a gas-powered hydraulic machine, because I've seen them, however, but they need to compact the dirt, so when they put the asphalt in, it doesn't settle because of the traffic over it and leaves sharp edges. I'd be more than willing to buy a can of yellow paint and paint the edges if that would help, so people would get something.
No, we don't want the public out there with paint.
I know you don't.
I don't think that would be appropriate. But, Bill, the gas company's still a couple of months away before they finalize their project downtown, and I'm sure Maple Square is a year or so away, so we'll have it looked at, but bear with us for the next year or so.
I might not be alive that long. I'd like to...
So, take another route, circle around. But thanks for that information, thank you. Anyone else with new public business not on the agenda? Okay, thank you very much. And we will now hear, she came in and she left. We'll give her a second. And what we'll actually do is go right to number four, the board will discuss the proposal to amend the parking rules and regulations. Mr. Henry?
Thank you, thank you. My name's Aaron Henry, I'm the Towns Director of Land Use and Community Services, back again, third time's the charm, for a revision to the town's traffic rules and orders. We started the process on May 16, talking specifically about some changes up around the Essex Tech High School area for a resident parking permit program that we're going to start up in the fall there. We came back on June 6 to talk about the entire book with some additional changes. We had some changes to Foster Street to address cut-through traffic. We also had several, I'll say minor to middling, changes that the Transportation Advisory Commission had seen over the last year, year and a half, making some minor parking changes that we kind of catch over the year. And then there was some minor grammatical and formatting changes. The board had requested a bit more time to digest what was in front of them last time, so I thought I would come back, and in your package you should have a clean copy of what was discussed at the last, the June 6 meeting, and I'm happy to answer any questions or address anything.
What the board did was take a vote to approve it on a first reading, which allows you to go back and make corrections, changes, grammar, misspellings, et cetera, et cetera. You've done that and given us a clean copy. I did want to give time for Select Woman Bernard and Selectman Duggan to peruse it, read it, and see if they have any questions.
That's good, Dan, yes.
Yep, so if you wanted...
We went through it now?
Yep, go right ahead.
No, I just want to make sure that, like we talked about for the residents for the Essex Tech, you know, those residents don't get impacted by the school, so that was the biggest thing. Other than that, I look through it, Aaron. Thank you. You know, you did a good job.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Duggan might want to ask a question or two, so I'm just going to put you on hold until he, give him a chance to arrive.
Sure.
And then he can ask any questions he may have or make comment, if that's okay with you.
I'll hang tight.
All right. And, thank you very much. Representative, welcome, you may put your bag down and go to the podium.
Thanks. We're ready for you. Oh, good. Hi.
So, item number three is we'll hear a legislative update from our state representative.
Good evening, everybody. Good to see everyone. Thank you for the invitation to be here, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Yeah, we had to reschedule this, and... So, originally, this was going to be just an update on one bill, and so I said, gee, that's kind of a narrow scope, why don't I come and give a little bit more robust update? So, that's what I have come to do. Happy to share just things that have been going on, it's a long list, very, very busy time at the State House. I'm on, I've been on six committees, I'm now on five. They needed spots on committees for two new members elected from the city of Boston, a fellow named Bill McGregor and another fellow named John Moran, and so I seem to have more committees than anybody, I don't know why, maybe an oversight, and so they asked, would you mind giving up one? So, now I have five, which include Ways and Means, election law, well, no more election laws, I have to talk to you about that, Madam Clark, briefings, sorry, financial services, transportation, mental health, and substance use, and I'm the Vice Chair of the Committee on Public Health, I think that adds up. So, it has been crazy busy. Today, I had, I testified on one bill, sat in on two other, one hearing, lots of briefings, all very good. The amount of work going on, I want you to know, on behalf of the citizens of the Commonwealth, is rapid-paced, focused on a variety of areas. Today, I listened to legislation around debt collection and the way in which often elderly or very low-income folks are subjected to these practices of debt collectors who are really out of control. We have the highest 12% interest rate that we allow on debt collection, and most other states, it's around, it's much lower. So, there is a bill that has been worked out, which is the way you like to see it happen. So, the financial institutions and the consumer advocates have all, they came and said, this is what we can all live with, so I'm hopeful that that will move. Have also been focused on, there was a great hearing on pharmacy benefit managers, I don't know if everyone hears, people are pretty familiar with pharmacy, Bill Bradstreet is going like this. Yes, pretty much. So, just a lot happening. We had the hearing last week on the legislation that Senator Lovely and I filed to require Mass Aeronautics Commission to collect airport noise data, and that was going pretty well until the Association of Municipal Airport Managers hopped on to the hearing, and he said, "This is illegal because not everyone has a tower," to which I thought, well, if you don't have a tower, then we won't be collecting anything, but there's no reason why we can't be collecting from the airports that do have a tower. We'll see where that goes. I'm frankly really focused on, you know, I'm hoping that changes can be made with this new manager. I think the new manager will have more influence over this than even legislation that makes mass aeronautics do a little bit more work. I think it's a very reasonable measure, I don't know, the aviation industry doesn't seem to see it that way, though we did have pilots who were in favor of our bill, so we'll see. Just quickly, because I know we have neighbors here, and I'm familiar with this issue as well, regarding traffic up around the Aggie, just wanted to highlight that we have conference, they've assigned a conference committee to work out the different tax relief packages. We did tax cuts in the House, yes, I voted for them, and the Senate did, I would say, a more tame version of tax relief, somewhere in the middle, those will come out, and then, of course, the budget, and I did drop in on your budget session, what, Thursday night, which I think is such a great idea, to kind of get your arms around the bigger picture forecasting. So, the budget will, we hope, be done in July, and if we have to pass 1/12 budgets, we will, but I want you all to know that special education transportation costs and local aid, Chapter 70 and Chapter 90, I think we can all agree how vital those are, and I think that those will be intact. Kind of a nice thing today, Transine is a Danvers company located up at the industrial park near me on Route 1, and they received an award today from the Toxic Reduction, Toxic Use Reduction Institute at U Lowell, because they devised a process whereby they eliminated PFAS, per polyfluoral alcohol substances that are very toxic, they never break down in your body, there's thousands of them, they are ever-present, they are in firefighting foam, they're in every single waterproofing, 3M Corporation makes this stuff, they've known forever that it was toxic, it's in our water supply, it's everywhere, and, well, I shouldn't say it's in our water supply, at Danger, Stephen King is up out of his chair. But, I'm laughing, but it's not a laughing matter, they are ever-present, they are everywhere, and, again, they don't break down. So, two things, this company figured out a way to carry out a process of coating their microchips, something along those lines, without using these substances, which is a great thing. The legislature is aware of the need to help communities address PFAS in the water supply. I think, that's another, meaning for another time, Steve, but my point being that there's going to be a multi-pronged approach to dealing with these. Notably, the Nantucket Fire Department fellows, the Deputy Chief and another firefighter, were at the meeting, at the, sorry, at the Toxic Use Reduction Tury event today, and they are working very hard on the turnout gear problem, because, yes, firefighting foam is a major source of this stuff, and every department was using it. They have now moved ahead, and they're trying to get more frequent use of turnout gear, it's not 100% better, because the inner layer is still having that coating, the waterproof coating is what contains the PFAS. They have at least developed a turnout gear with no PFAS in the outer coating, and that is progress, and so I'm hoping that it's on the radar. I'm mentioning this to all five of the communities that I represent, every fire department, to be aware of it, to make sure that their firefighters are aware of it, that they're getting testing and able to avoid as much as possible exposure to these chemicals. So, also just wanted to flag another bill coming ahead, which I think is coming, and that will be long-term care, omnibus oversight, transparency, and accountability legislation. Anybody who's had anyone in a nursing home understands how important it is to have better transparency, more information, you want to know that your workers are trained, supported, compensated, and actually workforce will be a big part of that legislation, along with learning more about, for instance, the companies that a nursing home might have holdings in, and we're not even aware of it. So, lots going on, happy to take any questions. Just also want to put out there that I do try to make part of this, I see part of my role is one of sharing the wealth of information and resources that one is, that are available to me as a legislator, and I want to make them available to the community, to a board. So, if anyone has, oh, forgot to mention one, which is that, we are in discussions with the excellent Office of the Attorney General, Andrea Campbell, to hold a tenant and landlord, tenant protection landlord rights training up at Bradley Danvers, which is the old Danvers State Hospital, now owned, was bought by, built by Avalon after the state hospital closed, now Bradley Danvers. Wretched things happening to tenants who are being told, "You have to move out, we're renovating your place, my place doesn't need to be renovated, you have to move out, we're renovating, you're going to have to pay the cost of moving, otherwise, you know, and we're going to raise your rent." So, it's a very, very worrisome situation, and there's not a lot of leverage with a large company like that, and people will say, "Do they have the right?" Yeah, they do. They have the right to raise your rent. So, but the Attorney General's Office is very available, they have a whole section on their website, "Are you being evicted? Go to it or call my office." I can't tell you how many elders I encounter who are housing insecure, and it's frightening. So...
Sally, if I may interrupt on that same subject, because I've been following that, they're technically not being evicted, they're being told to move out for renovations, and then they have the option to come back at a higher rent. That's what I find troublesome.
Yes.
Very much so.
Yes, I should be clear, we do have many people who are being evicted. At Bradley, it's the latter, it's what you have pointed out, Dan. Sure, we'll renew your lease, it's going to cost you another $400 a month, that's after you've moved out, and we've done this renovation that isn't really necessary, so I should have been, if I misspoke, I'm sorry.
No, no, I just, it is a troublesome...
It's terrible.
...issue for those folks up there.
It's terrible.
Yeah.
An elderly gentleman, I think he told me he was 92, and he looked at me and said, you know, "I'm very afraid, I'm afraid for my future." Who does this? Well, UDR or UDL Corporation, I think you could Google it for the right, you know, big, big corporation, they are not going to show a lot of concern for where people go, and it's egregious, and I do think that the Attorney General is looking at ways to tighten the nets, if you will, and make that not so readily possible. So, thank you for the question, Mr. Chairman. Tony, the check is in the mail, thank you. So, I'm going to sit and listen.
All right. Thank you for coming and telling us what's going on, and I'm sure some questions will come up.
Come and see me, come and see me at the State House, anytime.
Yep, and you have office hours?
Yep, my first Friday of the month, at the Senior Center, so 8:30 to 10, and everyone is welcome.
God, you have something specific?
Yep, a couple, yes, I do.
Oh, good.
Just a couple of questions. One is, I know how hard you've been trying to work on the MBTA bus stop downtown, do you have any updates? And I don't mean to put you on the spot, because I know you've been hitting your head against a brick wall there.
Yeah, it hurts. Yeah, so, I'm giving the new administration time to kind of get their feet on solid ground. Philip Eng has now been appointed the head of the whole operation. The tea is literally on fire or derailing, so I'm trying to give them a little bit of breathing room to get their arms around that. The bus redesign, I am told, is kind of on hold, and my last conversation with someone in the GM's office was, "We're almost underwater, can you, can you give us another, a little bit more time?"
Makes sense.
So...
Yeah, and even if we don't make any headway in getting a bus returned, then we should not be compelled to be under the, some of the constraints of the, of the housing, anybody inside the, you know, where MBTA provides service, we're being hammered on all sorts of regulations.
No, this would be, right, this would be where we might, as a community, say, you know, maybe we need to move into an RTA, which is a Regional Transportation Authority, that would be CADA. You see the CADA vans, I've seen them in our town, and my hunch, or I know, yes, they'll come and bring somebody who's in the CADA catchment area, who wants to come to Danvers can get a ride, but they aren't necessarily going to come down to Danvers Square and pick up people. They're going to, they're going to cater to their catchment area, and, but, you know, we'll see where this goes, but I hear you, we might be saying, "This is not serving our needs at all, and we understand that we're part of the greater Boston area, and as goes Boston, so goes our local economy, but, gosh, $600,000 and you can't give us a bus stop? Are you kidding me?" So, that has been my message, it's going to continue to be my message. I'm trying to be respectful, you know, literally, Philip Eng has been on the job two months, so we'll give it a little bit more time.
And, I don't know if this is at the point of legislation yet, but the tech admissions lottery discussions?
So, there just seems to be, yeah, an ongoing conversation there. Do we do a lottery, do we not do a lottery, how would you set it up? The vocational admission, admission process is under the rubric of DESI, and so I think, you know, we want them on board. I don't know enough about the, exactly how you'd structure the lottery to weigh in, but I'm glad that they're looking at it. If not, if not individual schools, I'm glad DESI is looking at it, because something needs to, to give. We don't have enough of, we don't have enough vocational education for all the people who want it. I mean, you all know this, you're dealing with it year in, year out, so fingers crossed, I guess.
And the last one, and again, I don't know if this is in any kind of legislation discussion yet, but there's discussion about Prop 2 and 1/2. It's a, you know, it's a 43-year-old law, and out of 351 communities, only two have not actually done an override or a debt exclusion, us being one of them.
And we're one of them. Who's the other one? Who's the other one?
And people consider it a point of pride, but it's actually.
No, it's not a point of pride, right.
And if you were in a classroom and the teacher gave out a test and 95% of the students failed the test, do you blame the students or do you blame the test? And so is, is there any opportunity to reevaluate whether Prop 2 and 1/2 is a, is a workable solution anymore and stop people from going through all these hoops to try to balance their budgets? Their operating budgets or their massive debt when they do a big project? So it should almost be Proposition Cola instead of 2 and 1/2.
Cost of living adjustment rather than, you know, I have long felt that it hurts our chances for funding when other communities can say, we've overridden Proposition 2 and 1/2. Topsfield just did it. They do it frequently, many other communities. And I agree with you. I don't think it's a badge of honor to say, we've never overridden Proposition 2 and 1/2. We've never seen fit. Now, we do have commercial real estate that our neighbors in these smaller towns just salivate. If you're Wenham, Wenham has no, they have nowhere to go.
But even Burlington has a better commercial mix, still has done overrides.
Sure, sure. And so, you know, at some point you say, well, if we have to, we will. If, if we really cannot meet the needs of our citizens, our schools, we would have to consider it. Will there be, I mean, I don't sense a huge ground swell of support to mess around with Prop 2 and 1/2. But as other communities run out of runway, I think maybe you're going to see people kind of wonder like, okay, well, can we tweak it? I will say, we tweaked in the House Economic Development or Budget. No, Tax Package, in the Tax Package that we did in the House. We made a small change in Chapter 62F. And I had an email or two saying, oh, no, 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 you can't touch that. We revisit legislation all the time. It's just, it's not sacrosanct once you pass something. But it happens that 2 and 1/2 gets a lot of support by people who, you know, I get it. They, they don't want to pay property taxes, but it does have its, you know, it poses a lot of difficulties. So I hear you, and I will be, keep my eyes open for a change Prop 2 and 1/2 caucus. They have caucuses for everything, housing, zero waste. Today I went to a great meeting of the Clean Energy Caucus. Yeah, but, you know, crystal ball? Don't know.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's, thank you. Maureen, any questions for the rep?
I think you do a good job, Sally. You know, it's a shame, like Dan said, with how the rents can just go up with those people. You know, people, you know, there's a lot of programs out there for people that are listening that you can own versus rent. People don't realize that. So check with your banks and your credit unions for little down payments. And there's a lot of grant money out there. So that could be a solution with some of these people that homeownership is bright still, even despite the interest rates going up.
It's great to hear you say that. And at one of the housing caucus meetings, I actually asked, like, what is helpful? What is useful here? And a guy from Pittsfield said, first-time homebuyer assistance. That is how you can help people. And so I know that we have the Affordable Housing Trust. I think we on the state level, we do have rental assistance. There, and if you feel like you are on the edge and you don't know if you're going to make rent and make a tuition payment, please reach out to, tell people to call your state rep, call Senator Lovely. Because there are resources, and sometimes people don't know about them. But the housing crisis is, it's wild. It's all around us. And, yeah, so it's good to know, okay, that perhaps someone who's thinking, oh, I'll never be able to own, maybe they can cobble together.
Yeah, or at least come up with a plan. Talk to your, you know, representatives, talk to your banks, your loan offices to guide them, you know, on how to get there.
Lynn did a first-time, or rather, a foreclosure protection pilot program that was hugely successful. So it can be done.
I just want to make people aware of that, that there are programs out there to help. And you're right, call your state rep.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And I was happy to hear that there's some momentum for the first-time homebuyer savings program. Seems like that's taking off. The real estate, people have been pushing for that for five years. And from day on the hill, I understand that there is some momentum on that very subject. So thank you for any support you gave.
I had a nice visit from two Realtors, Linda Turkot and Talisa from Topsfield. And that was one of the things that we talked about. And, yeah, they're, everyone is aware of it. I mean, there's one thing we're all agreeing on. No one is disagreeing that we are in a housing crisis, creating more housing that people can afford. So let's use that common urgency and get things done.
Thank you very much for coming and addressing the board. Appreciate it and.
Always a pleasure.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Your fan club. Number five, a public hearing will be held on the Danvers Electric Division Conduit Petition Number 20230424-1 dated April 24, 2023, requesting permission to lay and maintain underground conduits and manholes with wires and cables to be placed therein under the surface of the following public ways, Charter, Hobart, Locust, and Maple Street, placing approximately 750 feet of underground conduit. Somebody here to speak to that?
Good evening. My name is Jay Gomes. I'm a systems engineer from the Electric Division.
Welcome, Jay.
One Borough Street. Requesting permission to install and maintain 750 feet of underground electric utilities. And this would be on Charter, Hobart, Locust, and Maple Street to provide primary service to 120 Maple Street, the Maple Square Project.
So underground, so Mr. Burrows, they're going to be digging up these streets to put in underground conduit?
So the developer will be digging up the streets to put in underground conduit. And then they will restore the site to better condition as it was previously. And the developer will also be paying for the excavation, trenching, all primary wire and equipment associated with the project.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, Godna?
No, this doesn't replace any existing poles, does it?
No. We have electric circuit over on Charter Street that will be one feed. And then we have an electric circuit on Locust Street that will be the second feed for this property. Typically, any underground utility, you want to have two sources of power. In the event you lose one, you have a loop feed, which is more reliable.
But they aren't on the same circuit, are they?
They'll be on separate circuits.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, redundancy is only good if they're on different circuits.
Exactly, if you lose one circuit, there's no.
Yeah. Okay, no, I have no other questions.
Okay.
Thank you. Maureen?
No questions, thank you.
When will this start and how long will it take, you think?
Trying to coordinate with the developer once we get authorization and approval. Again, we'll look to coordinate when they're doing other utility work on the street to kind of minimize the impact to the town. I would probably say late July.
Late July?
Late July, early August. If, you know, schedule meets up.
All right, this is a public hearing. Anyone in the public with questions?
I move to propose a public hearing.
Wait, hold on, I'm sorry, late hand. Bill Rashry found me member freezing one. I like July start, when's it going to end?
I can't answer that question because again, we're going to be setting up with other utilities to maintain working in streets and water. So we have our own timeline for utilities. So we can get 750 feet done on the electric side, but I don't know what happens other than the trees.
Perhaps before Christmas. Okay. Before the snow flies. All right, motion on the public hearing?
Yeah, I move, we close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. What's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the Electric Division Conduit Petition Number 20230424-1 as presented.
Thank you. Does your second?
I will second it.
Thank you, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, obviously none. Thanks. Next is a public hearing will be held on Danvers Electric Division and Verizon Joint Pole Petition Number 20230424-2 dated April 24, 2023, requesting permission to locate poles, wires, cable, fixtures, including anchors, guys, and other such necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures. They are so permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires or intersecting public way for purpose of making connections with poles and buildings along and across the following public ways, North Putnam Street for the relocation of three Danvers Electric Verizon joint-owned utility poles, P-100-11, P-100-10, and P-100-9. Jay, are you speaking to this?
Yes, that's correct. Jay Gomes, again, the Electric Division, here to discuss the North Maple Street pole relocation, requesting permission to relocate three utility poles on North Maple to the new parking lot across the street from the 120 Maple Street, Maple Square Project.
Maureen, any questions?
And that's going to be done by our Danvers Electric crew?
That's correct, yes. Yeah, it's a joint-owned pole, but it's our set area.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
Godna?
So are any of these new poles? Or I'm trying to understand.
So they'll be relocated. The property of 120 Maple Street, it will be building out to the sidewalk.
Okay.
And that facility will have Juliet balconies. And those balconies will be within a clearance violation of the existing pole line that if your back is to Maple Street, is on the left side of the street. We'd like to relocate those three utility, two utility poles to the right and then one to the new parking lot away from the building.
So is the new building paying for this effort? I mean.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. They'll be paying for the pole relocation, utility poles.
So it benefits that building, it benefits their sightlines and their proximity.
Correct, and it will also benefit the town relative to kind of rebuilding that area with new overhead primary on Maple Street and North Putnam.
Okay, those are my questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Were you all set?
I'm all set.
Okay, thank you. Public hearing, any questions in the public?
Mr. Chairman, I move we close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'm sorry, yeah, motion on the petition. You don't have to read the whole thing, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the petition dash two as presented.
Thank you. Does your second?
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. So at this time to move things along, I'm going to go back to item number four. This is the proposal to amend the parking rules and regulations. We've all asked our questions, but to make it official, like a motion and a vote.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to amend the parking rules. Let's see, the board proposal to amend the parking rules and regulations.
As presented.
As presented.
Second motion?
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, it's done.
It's easy. That's it?
That's it, yep. But we just made it official. Yeah, I didn't want to keep you waiting any longer. No, you're welcome. Number seven, the board will consider the application of agility and scholarship for a one-day wine and malt beverage license at Endicott Park, 57 Forest Street, August 2023, from 12:30 PM to 5:30 PM for a birthday celebration. Somebody to speak to this. Please introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Jill Skioli. I've rented some space at Endicott Park for a birthday party, and we're seeking a one-day liquor license to have beer and wine served. We hired a mobile bar who has tip certification and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Will there be minors present?
There will be, yes.
And how do you propose to monitor serving?
I mean, everybody there will have their parent present. We do have, it's a truck where the drinks will be served from with the tip-certified professional, the only one, you know, accessing the liquor. So they'll be checking on that.
Godna?
What area of the park?
The pavilion.
Pavilion, okay. So the reason I ask is that fairly segregated, so you don't have to worry about people who aren't part of your event purchasing. Thank you.
Correct, yep.
And you've already told us it's tip-certified, so thank you. I'm all set.
Maureen?
I'm all set, thank you.
What's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the application for the one-day wine and malt beverage as presented.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Number eight, a public hearing will be held under Chapter 138 of the general laws and the application of TGI Fridays Inc., DBA, TGI Fridays, 49 Newbury Street. Stephen Carter, manager for a change or manager of an all-alcoholic license at that location. Welcome, please introduce yourself to the folks at home.
Good evening. My name is Albert DiNapoli. I'm the attorney for TGI Fridays. With me is Stephen Carter.
Welcome.
The applicant for the manager of record. Mr. Carter.
The clerk, all the paperwork in order?
It is.
You got to check? You got to check too?
I got to.
Okay, go ahead, please tell us what you want to do.
And we also supply the alternate managing listing sheet. And Mr. Carter has been with TGI Fridays off and on for a total of 16 years, worked in other restaurants as a general manager, has appointed, has been appointed manager of record, I think, in Danvers much earlier and in other restaurants in the North Shore. So he comes with a lot of experience. He's been feverishly reading the Danvers liquor regulations while we're sitting there. So I, I think he's ready to be quizzed. But I think he comes with a lot of experience, so we're excited to have him at, at the store here.
Thank you. Questions, Maureen?
I'm all set.
Godna?
My normal questions are how many hours? You say 60, that's a lot, especially if I'm from the hunt. I see that you're sort of safe. Your experience speaks for itself. And you've already preempted my discussion about the alternates on the, on the license. So that, the presumption being that anytime you're open, there's someone whose name is on that certificate in the restaurant.
That is correct.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing, any questions in the public? Hearing none?
I move we close public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, what's the will of the board?
I move we accept the application as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's it, welcome, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck. Public hearing will be held on the application of Pub 49, 49 Maple Street. Melissa Byrne, manager, to modify the current entertainment license to add three coin-operated amusement devices. Madam clerk, how are they modifying or what does it currently call for?
They currently have a seven-day entertainment license as well as a jukebox. So to that entertainment license, they'd like to add three coin-operated amusement devices.
To make total of four?
Well, the jukebox is separate.
It's, but it's still a coin-operated?
It is, the jukebox is separate. I think the fee is a little bit different.
Okay, all right, thank you. Melissa, welcome.
Hi.
Please explain what she just said.
Yes, exactly. We like to get three coin-operated arcades. It would be a, a big buck, a shooting game, a golden tee, which is golf, and a multi-cave, which would be Pac-Man, Frogger, Donkey Kong. They would be in place of a couple of the tables in a corner that nobody really sits at.
So you were moving a couple of tables to put those in?
Yeah, it's kind of like a dead area that nobody likes to sit at.
Okay. Godna, any questions?
No, I'm familiar with the location and where they're proposing. No, I'm familiar with the location and where they're proposing the point, I have no questions.
Okay, Maureen?
What made you think of doing this?
Well, we've had them before in the past at our other place, and it was kind of like an area that nobody really sits at, and just to get more revenue for the summer.
I think, Donkey Kong?
It's like, you know, the old games.
I like those, yeah, and the golf will be good, well, no, I'm fine.
All right, thank you. Public hearing, any questions in the public? Hearing none?
I move we close public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, good luck, Melissa.
Thank you.
Hold the motion, yep, sorry.
I move we accept the application as presented.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're going to make it official, good luck. A public hearing will be held for properties requiring permanent and temporary easement takings, seven and nine College Pond Road, six Green Leaf Drive, and forty and forty-four Summer Street. Mr. King, are you here to speak to that?
Yes, thank you, good evening, members of the select board. My name is Stephen King, I'm the town engineer for the Department of Public Works for Town of Danvers. Tonight, we're here for a public hearing for an eminent domain taking and awarding of damages for permanent and temporary sewer easements taken on the properties of seven College Pond Drive, nine College Pond Drive, forty Summer Street, forty-four Summer Street, six Green Leaf Drive, total award of the damages is a hundred and eighty-two thousand four hundred and sixty-five dollars between the five properties. Just to give a little bit of background on the project, we have a, a sewer, permanent and temporary sewer easements are for a new sewer main, that will be eliminating the existing Green Leaf Drive ejector station, pump station, that was in nineteen, constructed in nineteen seventy. This is, this pump station has exceeded its useful life, it's beyond fifty years in service, at this point, it's no longer viable as a, as an alternative to replace, they do not make these components anymore. So in the process, over our, my past predecessor, Rick Rogers, and myself, over the past couple of years, we looked at developing a few alternatives to replace this existing pump station, or eliminate it. We looked at three different alternatives, one obviously was to do a new sewer main easement, sewer that would connect Green Leaf Drive to College Pond Road due to a new SESD interceptor that was installed in the early nineteen, in the late nineteen eighties, early nineteen nineties. The second option was to go out throughout via Summer Street and connect back down College Pond Drive as well. Third option was to do a full replacement, fourth option was obviously to do no, no replacement at all, and just do interior design, do some interior repair and maintenance. Again, because of the, because of the components involved in this pump station, we were no longer able to buy the materials for this, for this pump station, so that, that fourth option was no longer valid. Based on design costs, we were working with our consultants, we thought that the optimum route was to use a, a gravity sewer main that transverse an easement, or we call it cross-country, to go from Green Leaf Drive to College Pond Road. Based on that, we came up with several scenarios of where we could actually put the sewer main across the five properties that were discussed in the description of the public hearing. Based on those alternative routes, we picked one that was beneficial, both like encompassing all the properties that were on, or would have been affected by the sewer main installation. Once we had that install, once we had that route described and picked, we then went through a process of doing appraisal for the properties that would be affected by the sewer main easement, and also went into our permitting aspect as well. We're going to be relocating some wetlands, and doing some disturbance of wetlands, we're going to relocate them actually to the Ivan G. Smith School as a future learning project for the, for the kids over in that school as well. We've, at this point, we've finished our appraisal of the properties based on fair market value from our professional consultant that did the work, we've also did our, our conservation hearing, we got approval from the Conservation Commission to move forward with the project. We received town authorization for the funding for construction and design, and the payment of awards and damages to the properties in our twenty twenty annual town meeting, and just recently in our twenty twenty-three annual town meeting, the town approved the select board to authorize the taking of the properties for the, for the sewer main easements. Based on that, I'll take any questions if you have any.
Goddard, any questions?
Can you explain the temporary easement and permanent easement?
Sure, a permanent easement will be permanent in perpetuity for the property, a temporary easement lasts three years and then dissolves.
So as I look at the diagrams you provided, you know, and I'm assuming the fact that there's jogs in it, that instead of straight shot, that those are related perhaps wetlands, which of, which of these are temporary, I mean, the, if you're building into the five properties, one, two, three, four, five, you wouldn't allow someone to build on top of that, it's either a permanent easement, how can it be temporary if you're built, if you're actually claiming part of the land?
So if you're looking at, you should have two diagrams.
I'm looking at the black and white diagram.
All right, in figure A, it's marked as either with a P or a T.
Okay, yeah, and I see that there's Ts, but the temporary easement under map twenty-six lot three, the lowest one closest to the legend, it's still going under that person's property?
Yes, that's for access, for the contractor.
Oh, for access, that's not a physical structure going under there?
No.
Okay, that was, that's the answer, so there's no actual pipe under that home, onto that land, they could build, you know, within reason, something over that when the three-year easement is over.
Absolutely, yep.
Okay.
The permanent easement is a twenty-foot easement, sorry, should have described that, thank you for the question. The permanent easement will be a twenty-foot permanent easement, and there's ten feet, temporary easements on either side of the twenty, which will dissolve after three years.
Okay, thank you, now, now I better understand, so in effect physically, you'll only be affecting underground, something physical, tangible, will only be affecting three, four, three properties. The map twenty-eight lot three and map twenty-eight lot six eventually will go away, there won't be any physical piping under their home, under their home.
There's a small section of permanent easement between six Green Leaf and the Town of Danvers property.
Yep, right on the line, I get it, okay, no, thank you, thank you for the.
And also to describe the, for the sewer main easement, this is something that's going to be completely buried underneath the ground.
Mm-hmm.
Once it's completed and done, part of our contract, we go back and restore the properties, full lumen seed, full sod, full pavement, whatever we disturb and put back in better, or same condition or even better.
Except for one tree.
Except for the trees. Trees, the trees cannot be planted, replanted back in the permanent easement, over the line.
Yep, over the sewer line.
Sewer line, correct.
Thank you, those are my questions.
All set, Maureen?
So this might be a silly question, but when College Pond development was done, why wasn't this, I mean, talked about back then, before the development came in with the developers? I mean, it's hard to say, but, I mean, because of the Green Leaf pump station, there's no other way of us fixing that, so we don't disturb the neighbors?
They don't make that pump station, it's an ejector station, so it's compressed air pots, they don't, they don't make that station anymore, it's submersible, wet well stations or dry pit pump stations, so in order to fix that, it'd be a full replacement excavation, trenching in that same area in order, in order to replace that pump station.
What's this, this big, what's, what parcel is this, this biggest lot? What number's that?
I believe that, that's a care assisted facility.
Okay, so behind that?
It's behind that, correct.
The neighbors, are they here to talk about?
I believe we do have neighbors.
So I'd like to hear from them.
I'll call on them when I'm ready. Are you done?
I just want to hear what, what comments.
It's your turn.
Okay, I just want to listen and know more about this.
Very good, this is a public hearing, anyone in the public wish to make comment? Sure, go ahead, the microphone, please.
I'm one of the property owners.
At the microphone, please, so the folks at home can see you and hear you.
Thank you, everybody, my name's Charlie Hannigan, I'm one of the property owners at forty Summer Street, the reason I rose my hand is because we don't have a copy of the document that everybody's referring to, and I'd like to know if one of those is available so we can at least look at it while we're in the meeting.
Got a copy?
Steve, I have a few.
Maureen and Jim would like to have a copy too.
Does anyone else need one?
Now, Steve's been very good with helping us, you know, keeping us informed about what the plans are, and, well, Jim, Maureen, Gail, and myself have been, you know, very cooperative, and we're all in for the, the project itself, and, but there's a lot of details that need to be worked out that we haven't had a chance to talk about, and I'm interested in hearing a little bit more about the timeline, when it's going to start, the compensate, the compensatory that's going to be due for the eminent domain, and how that was determined for each of the parties concerned, and I guess that's some of my questions about maintenance on the property afterwards, because we're no longer going to own the property, the city's going to own it, so how often will it be repaved, who's going to maintain the road during the snowstorms, who's going to maintain the road itself, you know, after the fact, and although Steve's been very good about it, there's just some of the smaller details that we need to work out before any of the starts or anything, you know, signed off finally.
Those are all good questions, and I'm sure Steve has answers to some of them, but until he has the final approval to move forwards, he really can't give you a start date or an end date, but what questions can you answer, Steve?
Sure, thanks, Mr. Chairman, in general, I can give you a timeline on the range, based on, on the conservation order of conditions and discussions we had at those, those hearings, we determined that the best start date that we're trying to hit is after Labor Day, after Labor Day of this year, so September twenty twenty-three is when we'd like to start constructing of the project. We fully entail this project to take at least a year, based on the disturbance of being able to repave the driveway that would be affected, driveways that would be affected, and also be able to have two planting seasons to replace any of the sod or lumen that's disturbed during the construction process, process. As far as compensation, we did hire a consultant, our, my office went out, got three quotes from appraisals, we, we picked a quote to go with Simcox Appraisals, they went out and did an evaluation of each of the properties in twenty twenty-one, based on their findings and comparisons on comparables to similar-sized properties, residential houses in that area in the Town of Danvers, based on what costs are for trees, they came up with an evaluation for each of the properties based on what we were going to disturb during the process, and what the permanent easement's going to be.
And his questions about maintenance?
The maintenance, so the maintenance for easement clearings, permanent easement clearings, if it's within a town property, we do, usually do take care of that maintenance, but once the permanent easement is there, the property owners still own the property. So if there's a driveway that we disturb, we'll fully, will a hundred percent replace that driveway, best condition, work with each of the homeowners, but once that project is complete, the driveway would be like it's a normal driveway, they would still access it, they would still plow it. We would then obviously, if we had to, we have a permanent easement on an easement, if there were something that we had to clean out as far as our sewer mains, we'd use that easement to get in, do that cleaning and maintenance.
Thank you, anyone else in the public with questions, please go to the microphone, introduce yourself.
I'm Jim Larrabee.
Welcome.
My wife, Maureen, and I live at seven College Pond Drive, and it appears that the easement that they're putting in through here is almost touching my house, and it appears since the last time that Stephen and I talked about this, that it's been moved closer to my house than it was before, and maybe that has something to do with the Conservation Commission, has it been moved since the drawings you sent to me?
So if I could just explain, we have a, a GIS drawing and an actual survey plan. The GIS drawing, which is shown like this one, is encompassing both the full and permanent, I'm sorry, the temporary and permanent easements, so the easement is still pretty much the same, but this is just depictional, it's not exact. The survey drawing, which shows the exact locations, bearings, and distances of the permanent and temporary easements, is still the same as what we've permanently discussed, so roughly, if you measured off the side of Mr. Larrabee's house, through the permanent easements, about twenty-nine and a half feet distance away from the corner or edge of his house.
And it's also, it seems to me that the, where the property runs down next to our neighbors and back of us, coming down all the way from College Pond Drive, that it was making a, about a forty-five degree turn to the right on, on Charlie's property, and now it looks like that turn is on, is a ways into our property. And, and if you look at the, at the drawing, you can see the house, it's our house that's on College Pond Drive, you can see how much of our property they're taking up to, to put in the easement. The other thing is that what they've been talking about is compensation for this, I've asked how they determine compensation, and I was told he didn't have to tell me that, that it wasn't part of the public record, and that the amount that they would offer me, that would be it, and otherwise I'd, I would have to challenge it in court, so I have no idea how they come up with this, other than he says somebody has, some experts have planted. The other thing is that the numbers that he discussed, I don't know about the numbers tonight, but the numbers that were discussed at the finance meeting, somebody at the finance meeting asked him, where did these numbers, when did these numbers come about, and these numbers were almost two years old. Somebody was asked there, were they going to do a new appraisal and increase the amounts, and nobody answered that question. So if this was your properties or his property, I'm sure you wouldn't want to be paid what it was worth two years ago or five years ago. And as far as the project at all, we built the house there thirty-two years ago, bought the property, we've been paying taxes on it for thirty years, three or four years after we moved in, somebody was in the woods in back of the house, and they were putting out flags to mark the wetlands area, and I went out to ask him what he was doing, and he explained it to me, and he said that the pumps were, you couldn't get parts for the pumps anymore, nobody used these kinds of systems, the only way to go about it was to put a gravity system all the way from Green Leaf Drive down here. About ten years ago, somebody did the same thing, and I heard the same story, you know, you, we can't get parts anymore and everything else, it's been thirty years, okay, go buy a new pump, or spend a few more dollars than what's approved, and run the, the thing out to Summer Street from where it's presently located, not through my property, you know. Steve and I had quite a few conversations, they were always very polite, he was always very helpful about this, but this, this looks much different than the, than the drawings that I was shown before, and it doesn't seem like this is a transparent operation, you know, where, where do these numbers come from? Right now, they're selling house lots up on North Street in Danvers to build houses for five hundred thousand dollars, you know, I'm sure that house lots were less expensive two years ago, houses were two years less expensive, I know my taxes have gone up each of the last couple of years, and the appraisal on my property has gone up each of the last couple of years, I don't know why somebody would suggest that numbers that are two years old are acceptable to, to use as far as judging what you're going to pay me for, for our property, so that's what I had to say.
Thank you, Steve, and any comments to the gentleman's comments?
Yes, in regards to the easement plan that was discussed, it's still the same easement plan that I sat down with them over a couple of times, the Larrabees and myself made various changes prior to this final plan, to make sure we try to get as much of that easement, permanent easement off their property as much, as best we could, and still be able to tie in on College Pond Drive. Some of the easement plans, some of the plans that we were looking at were actually the civil engineering design drawings, so you could really get a good depiction of like where everything is located versus just seeing the lines and the house lots shown on the survey plan, so that's why it may look a little different based on your bearings of what you're seeing on a survey plan versus an easement drawing, but the easement drawings can be the one drawing that's recorded with the registry of deeds.
And can you respond to the methodology and the? And can you respond to the methodology and determining the values?
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm not the professional in appraisal evaluations. And that's why we hired another party to do that.
So you went outside and hired a professional appraiser? I don't want to put words in your mouth. You hired a professional appraiser who did his valuation and came back with these values?
Correct, yeah. He was hired in November 21. I think we got the results just about January 2022, February 2022. So roughly looking at about a year and a half since the final evaluations were made. Over that time, we obviously had to go through a couple of meetings with conservation. We did a walk-through last winter with all the neighbors based on what the easement drawings were going to show, kind of showed everybody what trees were going to have to come down, the general path of the sewer main easement, the general location where the sewer manholes are going to be, the timelines, when the construction was going to take place, the restoration process, the from us to start to finish it, when we're going to complete the project.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Yes, ma'am?
Can I say something, Dan, too?
Yes.
Um, I, when you said appraisals were done in 2021, I mean, this is 2023. I mean...
June 2023, yep.
Yeah, so I would think...
Well, they say, he said they did, he got the results back last year.
In January.
January 2022.
Right. And the appraiser works on information that's always a year old. So this is not unusual.
Oh, last six months.
All right. Ma'am, do you have some comments?
Hi, my name's Maureen Larrabee. I live at Seven College Pond Drive. I just want to say also, on an appraisal standpoint, we need clarification.
Hold on. Gail, all right?
Do you need some water?
Okay, thank you. Continue.
And do you have ready? Just take your time, yeah.
It's okay, nope. Don't be. You can continue, please.
Are we okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
No, I just want to add what my husband has added and what Charlie has added as well. When we started talking to Stephen King about this, I don't know the, the exact timeframe, but we were outside on my porch in masks because of COVID. So whatever kind of appraisal we're talking about needs to be more current than going on two years ago. This is not a small thing. This is going to come down the side of our property. We're going to lose three trees. Yes, they're going to be replaced. We're going to lose our side lawn. Yes, they will fix it. We're going to lose our irrigation system. Yes, they will fix it. There are a bunch of trees across the back of our property that were designated below what they call the rim of the wetlands. We've been good stewards of that property. We've asked, could we take those trees down? The answer was no, because they abutted the wetlands. They were below the rim. Now they're all going. So, you know, we need, I need clarification. This is, we've lived in this home a long time. We've worked hard to maintain it. This is going to be a big disruption to our lives. And I think before this moves forward that we need, all of us, all of the neighbors, we need to know what's going to happen, when it's going to happen, and what the compensation is and how that number is arrived at. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Dan, can I just say?
Yeah, go ahead, Gail.
Gail Eaton, 40 Summer Street. Just to speak to the drawing and everything. And, you know, it's not, to me, it's not about the compensation. It's just what's going to happen, the timeline, the timeframe, as far as, you know, they're ripping up our driveway. It's close to a tenth of a mile. So every morning, I'm going to have to drive my car over to Greenleaf Drive for, I don't know how long that's going to be, every day, bringing groceries in. I think I'm worried about it a little bit with emergency vehicles. If there was a fire at my house, how's the fire trucks going to, how are they going to get down and in there? An emergency, almost had an emergency right now. I mean, there's a lot to go, you know, to happen with this. And Stephen, if it's supposed to start in September, then, you know, when is this going to get ripped up? How long is it going to be ripped up? It's supposed to be covered at night. But that means every day, how am I going to get into my house? How am I going to get out? I, I, you know, it's, it's a distance. Most of the neighbors know. It's not, it's not a regular driveway. It's, you know, Leonard Nolan, if you know, remember him, Dan, he, I'm taking him down to my house and he goes, what's the name of this street? I go, Mr. Nolan, it's my driveway. You know, and it's just, it's, it's just, I don't want to say scary, but it's, it's worrisome. You know, and this goes all the way down, you know, everything, this is covered by, you know, oil trucks. And then, you know, you've got all these vehicles coming down part of our driveway that may or may not be, I mean, are we going to be responsible for paving the driveway that's getting ripped up? Coming down to, you know, coming down from up at Summer Street, there's a section of our driveway just, you know, we're in theater, coming in and out. Is that going to be replaced? And then when we go from the end of where this is happening up to our driveway, now everything's mismatched. Plowing, we're responsible. What if you have a snowstorm in October? Which we've had Halloween. How is it going to get paved and plowed and get back in and out of there? There's just so many question marks about what's going to happen. You know, it's just, I think, I don't think we have a lot of answers for everything. You know, what ifs, but, you know, one what if could be a disaster.
Thank you. Stephen, any further comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Just to speak about the concerns just brought up, I do pride myself on communication. We specifically put a lot of language into our special provisions of our contract to definitely coordinate access points for any of the neighbors to get into their driveways. Each night, the trench or excavation is supposed to be backfilled, complete and leveled so they can get in and out of their driveways. I would definitely be, I'm going to be there on site. I would definitely coordinate with the neighbors and the butters and discuss on a day-to-day basis, are you coming out? Are you leaving? When you need to leave? And I discuss that with the contractor and the contractor would make sure that the homeowners can get in and out and access to their, to the driveways. I certainly wouldn't, wouldn't want to make anybody walk the distance of this driveway, which is, which is significant, just to get into their homes on a day-to-day basis. We are not allowed to use the entrance from Summer Street. That's private property. We will not be accessing that whatsoever. The reason for their permanent easements and temporary easements is to do full access through those locations, not private property. So we will not be using those, the driveway that connects to Summer Street to come in with our trucks or anything. That's solely for your purpose only. During construction, if there is a snow event, we would be responsible for clearing out the driveway to make sure that there's access in and out to for, one, the homeowners and emergency vehicles. And then two, on emergency vehicles, we would make sure that we have access in and out for emergency vehicles to get to any of the homes during construction. We do that on every street that we work on, every public way.
Thank you.
Yep.
So I appreciate your concerns, the unknowns, and certainly the questions you'd need answered that I'm sure Stephen and his staff will help work with you going forwards. This is a, a normal process and procedure for these land takings. It's nothing unusual, unfortunately. It's unusual because it's affecting your neighborhood. And my experience with both the engineering department and DPW, when work is being done on a particular street, they are receptive, they are responsive. On Page Street, the gas company ripped the whole thing up and I'm right in the middle of Page Street and get in and out was very difficult. But the, the public works department were there to facilitate anything we needed during that short timeframe. Not going to be, yours is not going to be short, but the town will be there to help you, assist you. They'll just, if there's snow, they'll take care of the plowing of your driveway. Price-wise, I can't speak to that. I will tell you, you have every right to get your own appraisal, whether it's current or not. And you have every right to question the amount of money that the town is offering you. Don't feel that, that once they give you $5, that's the end of it. You can get your own appraisal. The timeframe, if we don't act on this tonight, we don't meet till August 15th. And if we go that long, he's not going to be able to start at Labor Day. And it's just going to push it off and prolong your agony. So I really think Steve has done his best to work with you and explain the situation. But this is for the public good. And that's why we do these eminent domains. Anyone else in the public with questions? Please.
You know, as far as the, the public goodness, this, this, there are other ways of resolving this. If we were in a situation...
I can't, I'm not an engineer. The engineer department has come to us with a plan that they've thought through. They've looked at other plans. This is the one that town meetings approved. And I, I can't tell Steve, come up with a better plan because he's already come up with the best plan.
The people, I assume that you folks have a relationship with the management of, of the town and that therefore you can express to those people your interests in seeing that the, the process is as painless as possible.
Oh, those would be our instructions to the town manager and his employees. The board does not tell employees what to do, but the manager. And the manager will hear from us about our concerns with this project. And the manager will let Mr. King know and DPW know. And I have all faith that they'll do the best they can do. Go ahead.
Yeah, two things. One is, we're presented with this option, obviously. But I'm certain based on historical projects and work that's happened with the, with the engineering department, that they went through many iterations and looked at many, many options and determined that this was the most appropriate option, given the constraints of wetlands, given the constraints of other private property and access points and so on and so forth. So I'm, I'm very comfortable that they've done their best due diligence to get the best, least impactful solution. The question I'd have for Steve is the independent assessment. Was that based on assessment of comparables at the time and not on the assessments that the town had, which are by nature a couple of years old?
It was based on assessments at the time. So I, I want to say, in comparison, the Beaver Brook subdivision was at that point selling lots.
Okay, so it was based on comps at the time?
Correct.
Not on the town's assessed value, which is based on?
Based, no, it was based on the
Okay.
the time and the sales at that time.
Very good.
Not based on town evaluations.
Okay. That's important because as we all know, town evaluations are historically lagging by nature. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else in the public? Yes.
Charlie Eaton at 40 Summer Street. I think there's still a few, we're not trying to stop the project. I agree with Stephen on 40 Summer Street. We want to, you know, move forward with the project itself. I still think Jim and Maureen at College Pond have some questions. Doug may have some questions over there. And it's just some small detailed questions we would like to have answered prior to the start of it.
Stephen, can you comment? Can they get their questions answered before you start?
We could do something within the next two weeks. I'm going to offer my house for a place for us to just get together any time within the next two weeks or so or a time as convenient for Steve, just to come over and maybe answer a few questions that we all have for the project.
Probably best to answer them on-site. Makes more sense to me. I think, Stephen, is that something you can help accommodate them with?
Yeah, absolutely. We've been more than willing to meet anytime with the, with the neighbors and the butters of the easements.
And if they don't meet with you, you let us know?
Yeah, Steve, Steve could pick the time of the day and, you know, run it by Maureen and Doug. And, you know, if it's agreeable for them, then, you know, if you meet at my house at 40 Summer Street and just hash out the final details.
Good. Okay, that's fine.
Just to add to that also, I foresee probably a couple of meetings happening before we even put a bucket in the ground. You know, if we were to go out and advertise and bid the project and then secure the services of a contractor, I think at that point is also another good time to meet with the homeowners.
And have the contract and meet with the homeowners as well, I think, would be a good, good idea. All right. Doug?
Kind of wonder why the town...
Please, to the microphone.
Mr. Chairman, while he's going to the mic, I'm wondering if, when the, when it goes out to RFP, if you might share those documents that will have further details with the neighbors? Great.
Doug DeRosa, 6 Greenleaf. I'm just kind of wondering why the, the appraiser and his appraisal that we all know is at least a year and a half plus old. Why can't it be revised? Just put a call and see if they could just review it and adjust it to today? It's not going to start for a couple of months. And they already have all the information regarding the property. So it would, I think it'd be fair for the, for the neighbors to give them some comfort that at least, you know, they, they have an evaluation that's closer.
Makes sense, but Stephen, is that be a normal procedure to follow through with? Would that be proper?
Mr. Chair, I would definitely refer to our town council as far as the orders of how, how it should go. But I believe there is language in Master of Law Chapter 79 that would allow us to make amends. But I would refer that to town council.
Okay, good. Please do. Thank you. Okay. Can we have a motion on the public hearing?
I move a closed public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Before we vote, I need to disclose that I'm a member of the historic society with Gail Eaton, member of Kiwanis with Doug DeRosa. Disclosed. Okay.
And I'll also disclose that I'm a member of the, of the, no, every, I mean, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm, I know all of the participants personally, so.
And I too will disclose that I'm a Kiwanis member, too.
Okay. All right. May I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Danvers Select Board approve order eminent domain taking of temporary and permanent utility easements on property located on the town of Danvers at 40 Summer Street, 44 Summer Street, Nine College Pond Drive, Seven College Pond Drive, Six Greenleaf Drive and Town of Danvers. For the amounts of consideration shown payable to the respective owners of each parcel shown on Exhibit A to the order of taking as well, all, all as authorized by Article 24 of the May 15th, 2023 annual town meeting.
Mr. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion. Hearing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Good luck, folks. My sympathies to you and not easy.
Thank you.
Stephen, we'll take good care of you.
You're welcome.
So just a question. We have it here and we needed it here? Okay, I, I get it. Yeah. The board will conclude deliberations regarding a vacancy on the Beverly Airport Commission. For the record, we had five applicants. We heard the five applicants over a series of two meetings. And is the board ready to make a decision on one of the applicants?
Mr. Chairman, I, do you want me to make a motion and then have a discussion or just?
Well, are we ready to discuss any of the candidates?
Yeah, I am.
Okay, so go ahead.
Um, I, I went back and looked at the, all the applicants and I gravitate first to someone who has aviation experience. It's, it's, it's good to have knowledge of, of aviation and be a practitioner if possible. When I looked at that, some stuck, stuck out at me, Bill Costelon, Wayne McGuire and Dr. Mioe. And I think that after looking at all of them and the experience that they brought to the board, and there was another gentleman with aviation experience that I, that I'm not going to move forward. But I look here and I know, I've known Bill Costelon to be a volunteer at the airport for quite a while, participated at the airport. And I would like to make a motion to forward the nomination of William Costelon to Beverly for consideration.
Thank you. Maureen, do you have any comment?
Can I have those papers I left in the car?
I'm sorry, those, those are my markings.
I just wanted to make sure I got the right one. Thank you.
Yep. He showed up on the second...
Yep.
...iteration?
Yep.
That one is, was the first week? That gentleman showed up the first time?
Yep.
And that one, Dr.?
I liked Dr. Milioli. I'd recommend him.
So I, I've made a motion.
I liked his revenue. Probably was going to try to raise revenue.
So we have two names that have been offered with no seconds. So you can make a motion, Gardner, if you wish.
I need to make a motion for Bill Costelon.
Okay, so there's a motion for Bill Costelon. All in favor?
Do we have a second?
No, there's, you're not, I already commented, there's no second.
Oh, there's no necessity for a second?
There's no second, so we'll, on your motion.
Aye.
All opposed? No?
No.
Is there a second motion?
I'll make a motion for Dr. Milioli.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
You'll second it? Okay, it's been seconded. Discussion?
So I...
It's very difficult with five.
It is.
And we're not going to necessarily agree with everybody.
No, we're not, and, and I, and I get that. Some of them, we all, you know, we, obviously, I, I had one and three.
Yep.
I, I'm fine there. I'm just, I'm wondering if a full board doesn't make a more, we're, we're not getting seconds, and we're not getting...
Right, and unfortunately, we're only three of us tonight.
Right.
And I can't, Aaron's not here, do we need to have somebody recommend this at this time?
No, no.
That we can table till August fifteenth?
That's what I was about to go, that's the direction.
That's fine.
Because what's going to happen is, as I explained to the board last time, this will, our recommendation, whoever we decide, will go to the city of Beverly. They will then hear it at the city council meeting, the recommendation, they will refer it to city, to a subcommittee.
So maybe by Christmas, we'll have somebody.
Right. I don't think, I don't think two months is going to...
No.
I move we table, but I've already seconded Maureen's motion, so we should probably...
No, I, I would say if Maureen doesn't mind withdrawing her motion so we can table it for the next meeting?
I think it'd be nice to have all board members.
Yeah, okay. So agreed, we'll table it. We're drawing, she's withdrawing.
I withdraw for now.
And we're tabling it till August fifteenth.
Thank you.
Who, Gardner, made the motion to table?
Yes.
Who seconded that?
There's no motion needed to table, we're in. It's tabled. Okay, thanks, Gardner. Maureen?
Mm-hmm.
That's about how I thought it would play out, with good candidates all around. Okay. The board will consider a proclamation recognizing the hundredth anniversary of Rotary International. Maureen, do you have that proclamation?
Yeah, I think I can read it.
Would you read it for me?
I think I can see it today. Thank you. Let's see, Rotary Hundredth Anniversary Recognition Day in the Town of Danvers, whereas First Club was formed in Chicago with four businessmen, who chose the name Rotary, because initially they rotated subsequent weekly club meetings to each other's offices, and whereas Rotary International is now one of the largest organizations in the world dedicated to causes that build international relationships, is made up of forty-six thousand member clubs worldwide with a membership of one point four million individuals, of whom twenty-two percent are women, and whereas Rotary's stated mission is to provide service to others, promote integrity, and advance world understanding, goodwill, and peace, and whereas Rotary Club of Danvers is always ready to welcome people who are committed to, to do good in the community and beyond, and whereas Rotary Club of Danvers embodies all of these ideals and has been generous over the years to the town and to its residents. Therefore, we, the Select Board, do hereby proclaim that this day, June twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three, is in recognition of Rotary Club's one hundredth anniversary in the Town of Danvers.
Thank you, and I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. And the Assistant Town Manager will report to the board on various items of interest, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll stick with the Rotary Hundredth Anniversary topic. We just want to remind everybody that the Downtown Rewind is happening June twenty-seventh, which is a week from today. That is presented by Felcon Fest and Rotary to mark their hundredth birthday. The town will have representation there. Strategic Danvers will be there, along with a few of our departments. Rain date for that is June twenty-ninth of next week. The event is from five to eight. They will start walking some of the streets earlier in the day, approximately three P.M. down there in the square. The one other update we have, yesterday, we had our third annual Juneteenth celebration outside of Town Hall. We were joined by the North Shore Juneteenth Association for that event. We had a good number of attendance. The representatives spoke and offered some comments. We want to thank the Human Rights and Inclusion Committee and Jasmine Ramon, our Director of Equity and Inclusion, for their work on that event. And that is the updates I have for you tonight.
Thank you very much. Okay. The board will consider the consent calendar, please.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Correspondence, new business, previous business updates, Maureen?
Um, no, I'm really all set, Dan, thank you.
Thank you. Gardner?
Uh, no, the only correspondence I got, I know, happened to go to all of us, so regarding trash.
Yeah, bring it up, because we'll, I have a few comments.
Okay, well, we got, we got correspondence from a, from a, a citizen, asking questions about the size of the barrels, the current size of the barrels, and a lot of, allowed trash per day, per week, and they had some viable questions. I've, I actually asked the Assistant Town Manager today, and some plans are being formed to promote the, the change, to switch over the, the timeline, and pretty much try to get answers to frequently asked questions out ahead of time, so people know what's going to be on, when they'll be delivered, which we understand is now probably in the August timeframe, and, and the normal questions that have come up. And I would suggest that anybody who has questions that might, they want answered, but may also be something for frequently asked questions, response, they should forward it to the Assistant Town Manager. Is that our cue, or to David Lane?
Sure, they certainly can come through our office. There will also be published later this week or early next week, a page on the DPW part of the website dedicated to this, that will have an FAQ section. There are some questions we already have loaded in there, and then over time, as we get more questions, we will update that frequently.
And I'm sure once you release the information, you'll get more questions.
I would assume so.
I would assume so. So, and to the citizen that reached out, DPW is going to respond to them personally, so they'll take care of that piece of it, so stay tuned for the changes in trash. Actually, I have no other correspondence, just to say, if you see a vet, please thank the vet, and this meeting's adjourned. Good night, Danvers.
Happy Fourth of July.
Happy Fourth of July, you're right. Here before you know it, I'll take that proclamation, please.